All right, the microphone should be live now. Can anyone online confirm that they can hear us? All right, sounds good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody. It is 6:00 PM and I call this regular City Council 20th quarter.
All right. Luna Leal. Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilmember Beth.
He is ill this evening.
Councilmember Hill. Council... Mayor Lieutenant Thoreau.
Here.
And Councilmember Thomas.
Here. Thank you. If you would all please join me for the National Treasury Against or Moment of Silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to approval of the agenda with one small modification, and that is I would like to remove Action Item 10D for a future meeting. Some 11-hour questions came up that deserve some consideration and more discussion. And since this is not a time-sensitive ordinance, I think it would behoove us to move it on down and address the questions and communications a little more thoroughly. So to add to that, I would add a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Our move is to approve the agenda as amended.
Colin Faber. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to public comments for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in chambers who would like to deliver a public comment for items not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Please come up. Tell us your name, please. And you have three minutes.
My name is Daniel Benham. I'm here on behalf of Helios Charging as a right of update. I express my gratitude for your partnership in a project that significantly improved electric vehicle infrastructure here in Leadville. Last fall, Helios Charging submitted a grant application to the Colorado Energy Office under the DCSC process program. The proposal named this. The FCS is right here in the city. This was not a theory of electric size. As someone who has personally waited over an hour for a medium speed charger in town, I can attest firsthand that we're going through this. The Colorado EV registration is growing over 50% year-over-year as of late 2024, and the state targeting 940,000 EVs on the road by 2030. The gap in fast charging infrastructure, especially in rural towns like Leadville, is becoming increasingly pressing. I would share that our application was approved at the end of December. The Colorado Energy Office has agreed to fund 8% of the total project cost for six new fast chargers. Helios Charging will provide 20% of the matching funds, ensuring that there is no cost for the city for this critical infrastructure requirement. The proposal agent for these chargers is a city-owned parking lot behind the store at the Tabor Opera House between Third and Fourth Streets, a strategic site that provides both visibility and convenience. Under our proposed agreement, Helios would share a portion of the charger revenue with the city of Leadville, creating a sustainable clean-up stream while keeping the lot city-controlled and accessible to all. We understand and see already as a whole plate, so Helios Charging is committed to streamlining all permitting coordination and the required requirements to minimize any burden on your staff. We want to make this as turkey as possible. Additionally, grant funds through the program are rapidly being awarded, and we want to seize this opportunity while it remains available. Most importantly, this installation represents an opportunity to boost local businesses. Studies have shown that EV drivers typically spend 40, 45 minutes at nearby shops or restaurants while charging, injecting revenue directly into the local economy. As the rise in growth in more Colorado's adapt electric vehicles, this investment will not only meet demand, it will place Leadville on the map as a fourth engagement in the primary investigation. We're honored to work with you and look forward to greater progress.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give a public comment for items not on the agenda? Please come on up. Let me reset.
Okay. My name is Ollie Hancock, and I'm here on behalf of the Leadville Pride Night Committee, as well as the local nonprofit Mount Pride. And I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity and representation with Leadville's Pride Parade and then also the Volts Festival and Track Show that we'll be hosting on January... June 6th and 7th. I would say that rural communities are often not often represented and often don't get the space that they deserve. And so being able to have this representation is huge. Someone who grew up in an area and didn't have it, being able to return to the area and appear and be proud of it is really amazing. And then beyond our presentation, we're proud to provide information and access to services for everyone in the community and a celebration for your track show, which will be at the Tabor Opera House on Sunday.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it. Anyone else in chambers who would like to give a public comment for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone online who would like to give a public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to... This is such a happy evening. I... We're doing something today, which is some acknowledgements, some acknowledgements of people who have been very important or had a tremendous impact on our community. And so we have three this evening. I'm going to start with Mr. Mike Bradley. So I'm really happy that you could make it tonight. I was worried that we would have to just deliver. Thank you. I really appreciate it. So this is our first... Our first celebration goes to Mike Bradley and his commitment, his contribution to the city, making its history accessible to residents and visitors alike. Mr. Bradley, as you may know, has managed the city's two museums, the Tabor Home and the House with the Eye. Sometimes it's hard to realize everything that a person does until they step back from that role, and that is certainly the case here. Last summer, I think the only contact or the only awareness I had was Mr. Bradley to slip in and hand me records of donations from each of the museums over the summer. But here's what he actually does. He manages these two museums, staffs them with docents, and through that operated the Tabor Home and the House with the Eye seven days a week, six hours a day, between Memorial Day and Labor Day, which is just a tremendous time commitment. And trying to find somebody to fill those shoes is going to be challenging, to say the least. So I just want to express some sincere appreciation, Chief Sir, and would like to give you this certificate just honoring your commitment and your dedication to our town. Floyd, please. I am going to... Wait. Which one? Well, it was upstairs, Kristen. I mean, I can see it just went to her. Okay. We'll come down. I'm going to jump ahead because I'm in a really celebratory mood and move on to talk about three young women I've had. And I'm going to try not to cry here. I have a tremendous impact on our town. So later in... I thought later tonight, but now in a future meeting, we're going to take up ordinance two. And this is an ordinance that bans single-use plastic bags, prohibits polystyrene containers, and adds a $0.10 fee per, at least, per recycled paper bag. This authority that... What gave us this authority to enact this ordinance stems from a Colorado House bill enacted in 2021. But long before the state got around to this action, Tal Sheldon, Indigo Olsen, and Amara Olsen presented before council multiple times, asking the city to ban plastic bags and polystyrene containers. They researched the impact of this action and what keeping these materials out of our circulation, how it would benefit Leadville, and how we might enact such a regulation. They didn't wait for us or the state to get our ducks in a row. They simply just got to work after lecturing us about what we should do. These young women founded the environmental club at the high school. They developed and facilitated their day projects for K-12 students. They engaged with Lyra Colorado and developed a summer program for students interested in environmental science, a work that ultimately culminated in the first Colorado Youth Climate Summit held in Carbondale this May. They testified before the Colorado House Education Committee. Now, we don't get very many youth coming and presenting to us. And often they're, you know, it's... I don't know why. It's kind of frightening. And people get a little nervous, but not these three. Like, they were poised, they had their message, and they took questions in a very professional way. And so apparently, this was carried through the Colorado House Education Committee, where they testified in favor of a seal of climate literacy, which Indigo, I believe, will receive at your high school graduation, correct? Yes. And spearheaded a reusable bag drive in partnership with C4 and our local grocery store. Their level of civic engagement at the state level, our local government, and at a community level is a testament to passion and their drive to make a difference. So these three young women will be graduating from high school in a few short weeks after graduating from CMC with associates produced. They'll leave earlier this month, and then they're off to their next phase of life. Tal to the University of Richmond, Amara at Colorado College, and Indigo at Tocana. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the efforts of these young women and this really positive impact they had. And since Tal is in practice for Willy Wonka, the High School Musical, so we'll all have to go see that. And Amara was unable to make it, so Indigo bears the burden of all of this. And so I'd like to present the three of you, you in a statue, with some certificates of acknowledgement for your civic engagement and some little things to take with you as you move on to the next phase of life away from Leadville. Also, you have your Leadville Bears. And Leadville Steelers. Yeah, I have to re- compose myself.
Some things we're a little scared emotional about. That was one of them.
Well, here's another one. Sammy, get your dad. Bring him in here. So Leo Schmidt, everyone. And Sammy. All right, so this, this celebration is slightly overdue, and we definitely didn't want to let this one slip by. Captain Leo Schmidt is a member of our fire department and contender for the best mustache in Lethal. Marked ten years of service with the city in the end of March. Leo started as a reserve firefighter and soon after became a career firefighter. But that is just a sliver of what Leo does for the public and for the department. He is currently the A shift captain, leading an engineer, two firefighters, and a reserve firefighter. He's in charge of the child passenger safety program, which helps prevent child injuries and deaths in vehicles by promoting the proper use of car and installation of car seats, booster seats, and seatbelts. And for any of you who think that is an easy task, it is a forty-hour course to even get certified to install a car seat. So that's a, that's a whole week of work. He is also the department's apparatus coordinator. This is a huge task. It keeps our department mission ready, ready to go at any moment. When I asked some of his colleagues, what can you tell me about Leo? The comments all fell along with Sandy Vane, that he's a man with a profound sense of duty, who cares deeply about the people he serves, a true professional, and a wonderful father, Sammy. Do I understand just her five? I, myself, the council, and the city staff are filled with gratitude for your ten years of service. We wish you all the best. No pressure here, but forward to your next ten years. And then, yes, I never realized that we hope you can enjoy it. They have to be a marker. I don't know if you saw that. I was supposed to draw a mustache.
You want to talk of you, Steven Sanders?
Yeah.
Will you take it?
Yeah.
And I'll send it to you.
And we, and we.
And breathe.
Who else wants it? Congratulations. Thank you. Kind of the epitome of a presence. All right. One of the challenges with starting the meeting with all the mustaches, and we just have to move on to our. So let's move on. The consent agenda, which contains approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Thank you, Mike. You'll have to come by the museum to make sure we're here.
Oh, yeah. Got a bucket of water at the House of Eye. I carry five buckets of water from the table. There.
Thank you, Brigade.
Our consent agenda includes the minutes from our last meeting, the temporary use permit for the Lake County High School senior motorcade. I need everybody to turn it off for this. It's so much. And a temporary use permit for in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five pride parade. And if everybody is comfortable having looked over those, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thomas moves to approve the consent agenda.
Movement of the segments.
Oh, in favor? Great. Well, that was easy. I'd like to move on now to the presentation on eight oh nine spruce. Ms. Ortiz has done an awful lot for this property. I'd like to bring this up to date on all of the buildings on. We should be talking about one of the ones. Hold on one sec. We're running with the presentation on the big screen.
Okay, evening, council members. My name is Ariana Reeves. We can share the same kind of relationship here with me. It's been a joint effort between everybody. We have some really important leads to work on. I want to start with saying the city recognized a need to provide affordable housing to employees and respect for local employees. And that's why we invested in the inner springs to help me with that.
I was on the spot, so I froze up.
So we have a total of six incidences of this property, starting in the beginning of twenty twenty-four. Each incident was addressed with full litigation and reconstruction. We managed this through ZERSA and contractor coordination and staff as well. The first incident occurring in twenty twenty-four, the final repair being completed in April this year. It was a collaborative effort between ZERSA contractors, human resources, finance, and myself on behalf of the city captain. On this slide, you can see a breakdown of our water damage claims from ZERSA. We experienced a total of six incidences. Four of those were filed through ZERSA claims. The other ones were from site-wise, they had sort of a pipe. They are covering that damage fully, so we didn't have to use the ZERSA claim for that. Total Colorado damage claims were about twenty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-three cents. We just paid our deductible on those. Out of pocket, we are at four thousand dollars. Our reconstruction investment was much larger, including the damage in site-wise. It was a total of one hundred fourteen thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars. That's reconstruction at the end of water damages. Out of all that, we paid four thousand dollars. So big savings there. Thank goodness we're insured.
Can I ask a question? Can you go to the last slide? Oh, sorry. My question's about the next.
Okay. So in this slide, I'll see some pictures.
Sorry, it was about the last one. Oh, yeah, my question about this one. Sorry, did, did the sixty-eight thousand dollars, did insurance cover any of that?
Yes. Yeah, so ZERSA covered all of that. So out of pocket, we just covered the four thousand dollars.
Oh, so for both of those sets.
Yes.
So just so you know, the, our insurance coverage paid for everything except our deductible. So we had four claims, four separate claims through ZERSA. So we paid a thousand dollars on each of those claims, and then they paid the rest. The site-wise ones, site-wise, we didn't submit to our insurance. Site-wise is reimbursing us for all of it.
Okay. I, yeah, I was just wondering, because one slide had the four claims, and then the next slide had, is it the same four claims or was four different?
It's the same four things. I just broke it up by which ones were just water damage and reconstruction.
Awesome. Thank you.
This slide will show you maybe one of the hardest areas, which was the basement. So this is kind of during the construction, what it looked like. And then the next one, you see in the top left corner what that basement unit looks like. And we got during construction, the dining room, when it was unusable because it kind of staged everything. So as of April, all rooms are ready to go. Dining rooms went together. Centennial arranged a deep cleaning, so all rooms are ready to go. Common areas are nice and clean from construction to breathe. In a really nice area to be able to handle it. Some of our final tests began maintenance planning. The damage carpet has been replaced, and Centennial's arranged for deep cleaning in common areas. We're currently working towards replacing the boiler. It's scaled a few times this winter, but now that we have our roofs up in the middle, all of them provided then, we can start moving towards maintenance and preventative measures. So current need, we have two rooms occupied that are free year meaning. We have prospective students from CMC who expected to move in and stay until August. And then we just say additional two more rooms should be filled in. And on that, I'll see, Alicia, do you want to tell them kind of about your efforts?
Yeah, so I'm just sending emails out to city employees, seeing what really works best for them and see if they can help at that point. Because right now, as we all know, housing feels really hard, and we currently want to be able to offer up to our city employees. So Bree has definitely taken this on fully, just period of background supporting her for other. So whenever we get a new hire, I make sure I reach out to the department and get a seat there, hiring this housing or even transitional housing, because I know we take them all over here. So on this next slide, it is more property management. Currently, we pay two hundred and fifty in maintenance fees, but that's for zero to one units rented. After that, each unit that gets rented, there's a ten percent fee of what that rent is that we've added to the property management fee. But Centennial covers everything. They would arrange for deep cleaning, they collect a rent, they do the tenant applications, screening, deposit tracking, routine check-ins, and maintenance coordination. I'll answer that. I do know there was maybe some questions about total rent revenue. So currently, year-to-date, our total rent revenue is twenty thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars. Management fees, we paid four thousand five hundred and ten. Maintenance and cleaning, three thousand one hundred and ninety-seven. And issues or refunds that we issued, those period deposits and whatnot, two thousand twenty-two. For net revenue being ten thousand five hundred and sixty-two that we bought the property. Was all of that? Do I have any more questions to me?
Any questions for this, what is?
Yeah, I have a couple. So the revenues vastly outweigh the expenses so far. And you had mentioned that there's a plan to kind of basically put that money back into the home one way or another. Can you talk a little bit more about what that looks like? Is it just like a maintenance plan and making sure we're able to cover any maintenance in the future? Or generally what your process looks like? And if that's a process that we're handling internally, or is that through our property management?
So I can answer some of those. It is not through the property management company. So the agreement we have with Centennial is that if it's five hundred dollars, they can authorize repairs without really talking to us, just to keep things efficient. Over that, they need to contact us and we need to authorize those. So the money from the rent goes into the general fund. The, we don't have a special fund. So as you know, there are some special funds that the city has that, you know, highway user tax funds, those go in, they're sent for a special purpose. So it goes into the general fund. The idea being that when you all put the budget together, when we go and put in the maintenance line for maintenance, we can probably, we're going to need to budget for next year, more money for a boiler. But the idea being that that maintenance line theoretically, you know, the money that goes into the general fund from rent would either balance that out or be in excess of what we're spending on maintenance. And I don't think it's necessarily worth creating a separate fund to put the rent into, but that's, that's how we would account for that. Did that answer all of our questions? Yeah, okay.
And then I guess a follow-up to that is, do we have a general idea of, since we are taking on the maintenance, do we have a maintenance plan for that building, or is that something that's being developed?
Uh, wow. So I wish we had a maintenance plan for all of our buildings. We, I mean, I think we talked about this in the past. Some cities have done an inventory of all their buildings and have, much like you would get if you got a home inspection, sort of higher priorities versus lower priorities. I think when I reached out to the town of Gifsom, they spent a hundred and twenty or two hundred thousand dollars on the analysis of all their buildings. So right now, we would treat it like the rest of our buildings, which is if an issue comes up, we would have it repaired. Now, for this particular building, we know the boiler and that, you know, whether they're a boiler in this building, you know, roll the dice. Uh, we probably should be putting away money for both buildings, or definitely for a boiler in the future.
So we're worthwhile enough to know that we should save money, but not by knowing exactly when the issue will come outside of the boiler.
Exactly. I mean, it's, it's like maintenance on anything else. I would suspect that probably the boiler and exterior painting are going to be the ones that are going to come up for eight oh nine spruce, but.
And we also do do our ZERSA audit yearly, and they do check our release to make sure we are still good to go with everything constructed, like that, not the lead-in inspection, but they do what they immediately do and make sure if there's issues, they let us know, and then we work on it.
So there's some minimum guarantee of like compliance and on top of that, any things we don't have.
This building's boiler, for example, ZERSA identified, like, actually worked pretty good, but there is some corrosion on certain joints and pipes, and they would like us to address those. One thing I'll probably be coming to talk to you guys about.
Can you run through the expenses again? They went by so fast. I got forty-five ten and thirty-one ninety-seven in the last one, it's two thousand something. I can't remember which we're off for.
Oh, we're, yeah, so management fees was four thousand five hundred and ten and eight cents. Cleaning and maintenance, three thousand one hundred ninety-seven and eighteen cents. Refunds, two thousand twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents.
What's the, what's the refund?
That is a deposit, a deposit refund.
And then what about things like insurance for the property and utilities?
We keep those included in the rent, but I don't have those working out, but I can give them to you.
Okay, so the, the rent that's paid covers all the utilities and insurance. Okay.
I have one question, or it's unanswered by email, but I'd love to share with other council members about the housing priority matrix, like how they just decide who that's available to. Have all of you seen it, or?
So anybody who was on the council when we purchased the home is aware of the matrix because that was part of the discussion that that took.
I think it's on three of us, isn't it?
Yeah, me, Tim, Christian.
Well, for public knowledge, first is full-time city employees, second, part-time city employees, third, city employee candidates for full-time positions who've accepted, fourth, city employee candidates for part-time positions who've been offered and accepted, fifth is full-time employees of Lake County by Lake County Government, sixth is part-time employees of Lake County, seventh is full-time employees within the county, so like anywhere within the county, or any employer, and eighth is part-time employees within the county. Cool. Thanks for sharing that.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much. Oh, one thing we, we should just raise is we, for rent, we've, we've worked on that issue, and we are still going to be using the AMI table for Lake County. But we realized that probably using it at net income is pricing people out of the ability to use in the of the ability to use and be competitive in the market. So we are going to be using the same AMI table, be using gross income. That way it's still fair, it's still a chart, it's still the same process. It, it is just going to be more competitive with what is available for shared space within Lake County.
Thank you so much. We are going to move on now to department reports and I'm just going to shake up the order a little bit. Um, and ask human resources to go first, so we'll have to scroll down quickly.
Great. Um, so just a reminder again, uh, trainings are due soon. Sending out reminders here and there. Um, I was able to send a few screenshots. Uh, I hope that helped. Um, and I have a link as well, so you don't have to go back in email. So the next update, I'll have all that in there as well, since we're getting closer. Um, so that's my reminder. Uh, we have a few open vacancies currently. Um, we have a police sergeant detective that is open right now and it closes Friday, the 23rd of May. We also have a part-time animal control community service officer and that closes Friday, June 6th. Um, we have a part-time or full-time police officer that is open until field and we actually have, uh, right along next week for that position. Uh, just got contacted today about that. Um, and then with my revenue surger, we have a part-time summer docent coordinator and that's open until field. And then we also have a part-time summer docent, we leave those just to get staffed over there at these exams and that is open until field as well. Um, other than a job coaching and things like that, I am currently completing my certification to be the ADA coordinator for City of Largo. So I am learning a lot. Um, so, uh, working on that as I can. Uh, Lori and I are working on our employee handbook. We are getting to our final stages for our summer internship with a local student here in Lake County. Um, I'm also working on an easier onboarding process with our IT, IT department, Lori and myself. So that's one thing I'm super excited about, to make it easier to be in the new place with that. And, uh, I've just been entering these in person, virtual, just trying to get all the knowledge I can to do better and travel. Questions?
Yes.
Feels like the animal control officer has been open for a long time, or at least we've been talking about it for a long time.
So what happened, we had a candidate, uh, they, uh, just didn't offer. And so now what we're doing is moving into a part-time. Um, because we have a few interests in part-time positions, so the last position was.
Would it be one part-time position or is it like two part-time?
One part-time is, uh, having people slash community service officer.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm, I know I asked you this previously, but maybe you could just bring us up to date on the RFP for the municipal judge.
Um, I just have a few more things to get information on and we should have that hopefully the end of this week. It's not really next week. We have that out. Um, that is, uh, my list to get those done. Um, so I just have a few more things to clarify. So hopefully we can have that closing, I'm hoping, 17th of June. Um, so, yes.
Other questions for?
Thank you so much. Okay, now we're going to go back to, back to our regularly scheduled programming and go to the city administrators.
Great, thank you. Uh, so you'll notice that we have started something new on our agendas. Uh, acknowledgements is a new addition to the agenda. And so we decided that this is some, uh, place that we wanted to recognize contributions to the city. So significant anniversaries, significant, uh, achievements. And so you will be seeing that going forward. I was adding my notes here, the mayor promises not to cry, but I, I don't know that that's good. But I would never make such a promise. I would, I would like to acknowledge folks that have, had made a substantial contribution to the city and so you will see that going forward. Um, a couple other notes on, um, the proposed bag fee. As you might have seen, there were some questions that came in, uh, great before the meeting regarding the bag fee, um, from the chamber. Just so you know, I've reached Dr. Nancy Bailey at the chamber and, um, we will be meeting to kind of go over the concerns and questions that the chamber had. Uh, as you can see from some of my answers, this bag fee's been around, uh, for, for a while. It's just that this ordinance would propose remitting the fee to the city. And I think that's something we need to work on clarifying in the education campaign and making sure the rollout goes smoothly. I will tell you, um, we, we did, uh, a rollout for a tax recently and, you know, that seemed to go pretty smoothly regarding the pool tax and our communication with the merchants. So just want to assure the, the chamber that, you know, this isn't, uh, this isn't to be working, uh, against businesses in town. We want to work with them, so we just want to take a little more time, um, and discuss those concerns. A couple other things I did circulate out to, um, the city council. My work plan, I, it took me a little while to get it out to you because things kept getting added to it. Uh, since our last meeting, two things, uh, requests have been added and so you're just going to see the list. And you can see it, it's going to continue to be updated because, um, more things are being requested to be added to that list. So what I would ask you all is what I did in the, in the request and sending to you all is take a look at it. We're going to need to prioritize those. Uh, what I would say is meeting with our city attorney this morning, maybe one of those, one can get done a month, maybe, uh, maybe. So some of those, like an IGA could take potentially more than a month of negotiations to get across the finish line. So I just wanted to mention to you, it will be dynamic. So if you look back at it and it looks like it has more things on the list, it's because that is true. Um, our Ms. Ordeez has left, but she did, uh, get a draft to me of the requested spreadsheet from council member Thomas, explaining kind of where we are on that. I haven't gotten a chance to look at that, but I will be circulating that out to you as well, so you can kind of see where we are on strategic plan. Uh, so we're going to need to do some prioritization so that we do stay on task with the things council wants us to accomplish before the end of the year. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing up municipal court judge RFP. I've been working on it all day. Uh, I am, uh, tweaking it to make sure the scope of work and everything is correct. I put the close date of June 22nd, so, uh, we are in communication with one of our, our alternate, all, Judge Scott. He will be able to trust until the RFP is filled. Uh, I just need to confirm a couple things on the term of the appointment and, uh, make sure that's stated correctly in the RFP. So that will go out, as Ms. Better said, hopefully by the end of the week. Um, a couple of other things I wanted to flag for you. Uh, in addition to your SIRS training that needs to happen, I did send out a notice on cybersecurity training. That is a heads up for those who pay attention. Uh, that is council member Luna Leal is always good at asking about is something spam or not? The trainings come from know before, so if you all remember, that is paid for through SIRS. Uh, it's a company that does cybersecurity training. Please complete it by the deadline. It's like next week. Uh, it's just preparing folks for advanced AI social media phishing. So we've gone from lame emails that maybe have those spellings to actually, uh, AI voice recordings mimicking maybe my voice, maybe mimicking, uh, because honestly, they say the more you put on social media of your voice and your image, the more easy it is for you to be basically spooked. Um, I, we sit here every two weeks and we are on video and so is our voice. So please be super careful about urgent requests for changing your password, money, tasks, anything that comes to you urgently, the, the training will emphasize, call the person who's making the request. So if you get an urgent request from me that says, I'm at a meeting or I need you to run and get me gift cards, call me to verify that I really do need those gift cards. But it was actually interesting, the training was like, if the AI spoofs of your image, amazing, amazing, and your voice. Uh, so please complete that training. The last thing we need to do is have the city hijacked by, uh, cyber, like ransom lockdown. Was that? Well, I mean, honestly, you know, we, we have talked about this. There have been cities in Colorado that have been helped for ransom. Uh, they, and I don't know, they'll never say if they paid it, but they, the city has been shut down and basically asked to pay ransom to unlock all of their IT. So we do not want to be one of those cities. The other thing I will tell you is I do get the reports and boot click on the phishing. Uh, I do, so please be careful. There are, I, very diligent employees, is Ms. Kaztala on as well? Yep, there she is. Uh, she and council member Luna Leal are the very best at always asking, is this spam? And normally is, actually the fire department's pretty good at it too. So when in doubt, send it to IT Dan and me and ask, is this spam? Did I really get a free gift card from Starbucks? No, you did not. Uh, okay, so that's important. I know things, you know, we have things we're running around and doing, but that, that training is important. A couple other things, so the mayor and I went to the CML District 13 meeting in Salida last week. Uh, Dola Randy Sneed was there and I'm going to tell you, uh, she tried to be chipper about the situation regarding severance tax, but there's no, there's no good news there. So in order for the state to balance its $1.2 billion deficit, they raided severance tax and energy impact mineral fund. So the bottom line is, uh, we were told, and I pass this on to our finance department, we have a severance tax in our revenue budgeted at $220,000. We were told we should not expect to get what was budgeted. I don't know what that means. I suspect it may be closer to $80,000 instead of 220. So the other announcement that Ms. Need made is that the grant cycles for DOLA will not happen again until next year. So we did put in, as you all remember, Ms. Barrett updated you, we did put in again for the community center grant, which I'm really glad we did, we couldn't. Um, based upon the feedback, I think you all remember, we had a meeting with Ms. Need and we got feedback on what we could do better this time around. Uh, we took her feedback and we reapplied, so we don't know. Uh, it is going to be a very, very, very competitive cycle and I'm glad we applied because there may not be, well, there's definitely not going to be cycles until January. And if you all are paying attention to the state legislature, they balanced the budget by the skin of their teeth this year and their expenses will exceed, uh, revenues next year as well. So who knows if there will be any money coming next year for any grant cycles. We don't know. But for sure, there won't be any more this year. Uh, legislative updates, so the legislative session has concluded and one of, um, my one-on-ones with council members, I think, uh, I brought up what, what is our process going forward with that? So I just wanted to let you know, uh, once the legislative session has concluded and legislation has been signed by the governor, a couple of ways we find out about things that will impact us. The first is we received a CML update of summarizing all the legislation. Uh, but any particular legislation that's going to be impactful for the city itself, uh, our city attorney's office will send us them. So just so you know, the things that we will need to be implementing, um, some of them are already coming our way. So when you see the list of tasks and ordinances that we need to do, we may be adding some based upon, uh, requirements by state law. Uh, last couple of things, um, I, uh, wanted to talk about upcoming work sessions. So we have a number of them and, uh, let's see, I was going to try and pull this up here. Where's my notes? Yes, okay, so June 10th, you're going to have a joint work session with the county regarding, um, indoor recreation and possibilities for that. Uh, so that is here with county 10th. I will be virtual for that because I will be in Denver for other visits and will be able to make it back in time. You have, uh, we agreed on July 8th to talk about strategic priorities for on my to-do list. July 22nd is your annual legal training and July 29th is the comprehensive plan joint work session, um, with the county. And I should mention, the indoor recreation meeting on the 10th is also joint with the school district.
Sorry, can you repeat with July 10th and the 7th?
July 22nd is your annual legal training. And I also try, once we've gotten these down, you've received a calendar invite for June 10th. I will do one for July 8th for strategic priorities. You should have one already for July 22nd for your annual legal training and you should have one already for the July 29th comprehensive, um, work plan. And, um, so one last thing, um, I wanted to thank, uh, Dan who came to talk about EV chargers, we have been talking about this subject in Lego for, I think back since January of 2004. And I think we all agree it'd be great to have more EV chargers in, uh, within our city limits. I think we've talked to you all before, it is not something that we have the, uh, planning department or my department has that the, uh, ability to take on right now. Uh, e- even if it's a, uh, a private property, we'd still need to be considering two Ps, public private partnerships. So I think that if we are going to add that to the list, uh, if you have a request to add that to the list, we can figure out where to prioritize that in the number of, um, things that either me or planning would be able to take on. So, uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the city administrator?
Yeah, one. Thank you, Lori. Um, hey, just wanted to check understanding on one thing he said about the bag. The ordinance, um, is this correct that the state ordinance didn't apply to small shops with fewer than three locations, like, um, basically non-franchise? Okay, and the city one would apply to, to single shops, is that correct?
No.
No?
I, I, no, I, I, so.
Okay.
I think the only thing we can be more stringent is with the amount of fee.
So most of our downtown shops that ordinance would apply to?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. That definitely changes, uh, my understanding.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to spend some time, I, what I offered, uh, with Ms. Bailey was to sit down and hear their concerns and questions and kind of sort through them. And then I offered to come to a chamber meeting to present on this. So in, in the example of the sales tax for the pool, this will not affect that number, that many merchants. It is only going to affect a very tiny number of merchants. And right now, they should have already been complying. So they should have already been collecting the tax, they should have already been using paper bags. The only thing that we are asking them to do is remit a portion of that tax back to us because right now they should have been collecting it, they just got to keep it. So what we're asking is, under the state law, we could say, we want to take our portion of that, you get to keep, um, and I'm, I got my percentages mixed up. Forty, forty percent that merchant can keep, so they can still keep that. The rest of it, they would remit to us and we can put that towards a number of uses. I would love, uh, actually let you know, the other piece of information was, I did reach out to the county. The county already did this and, uh, our finance director mentioned that they did this, actually when she was there. They have already instituted the, uh, the, in the county, and I'm trying to find, ah, here we go. Um, so for their bag fee in 2023, they collected $21,190 and $24,8782 and so far, year to date, $2,030. And mind you, Safeway is in the county, not the city, so it will result in a small amount of money.
Are we asking for any retroactive?
We will.
Going forward.
Correct.
Great.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Other questions with city administrators?
Other questions with city administrators?
I just want to throw in, um, because Lori mentioned, um, the, our, our Dola representative Randy Sneed and and sort of, you know, draping some crepe about what we can expect from severance tax. Dola is having a little webinar tomorrow from twelve to one. That looks like it's on the very same topic. And so I'd like, I'm gonna, Randy talks really quickly and so I'm gonna go to that and see if I can figure out some of that again. But if any of you are interested, please let me know and I'll send you the link.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to street department. Mr. Mindy there.
This last month was kind of strange. Uh, the weather was either sunny or snow. So we were back and working on everything we were doing. Uh, we got all our equipment maintained and everything prepared for snow. But we're actually out sleeping on Sunday. So we have been working on the street, getting the streets, uh, swept. Uh, when the weather was good, we did, we did get some potholes. We did about eleven tons pothole, uh, built in the last few months, bunk and apps and stuff. Yeah. So we've got most of the west side done. Started on the east side. Right now, our online map truck, the one that we usually pick up the, um, coal patches, actually getting some work done. Waiting for that one to be prepared because it's actually right next to the, the, uh, business where we picked up the whole patch, but we picked up another ten, twelve tons. So we can continue that out for the start of the day. Uh, we're getting all of our equipment ready for we're gonna be working with Parkville on their project on the sixth. So we have leagues and blades in our, in our operator, you know, orders and everything ready. Uh, our sleeper has been maintained, had some training done with that. So I've got another two, we two operators. So I've got a whole three operators trained on the sleeper now. So we'll be able to get out there for, um, just the season is starting to be busy. Our big season has started around the beginning of May. Uh, I do have an administrative assistant helping myself with that and who is in training. And I believe Cindy Almore is my assistant here and she started and she's right in the middle of everything. She's uh, doing very well, I've seen, uh, so far. And, um, this is the beginning. Permits are getting ready. We're doing the T and Bs for all the events starting up. I think we've got a couple on for tonight for approval. Um, starting on through all those to roll up and roll so far on our end anyway. I don't believe there's much more. It's just, it's been a strange month.
Did you want to address the construction and the revisions we're gonna make to our?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, because of the situation here on Harrison Avenue, which is, it's kind of a, uh, one time vacant. We don't usually do much work on Harrison Avenue. We amended C dot and everything. But this one came through. It's a sanitation project that, uh, the company J H L, who also did the work over here last summer, uh, is doing, uh, they're replacing certain some very lines and naffles that were damaged through weather. They expect to be done by Thursday. It's one of those things that just went through as far as being on Harrison Avenue. We did, uh, remedy that. We're going to make a condition in our permit process that the company, the contractor and the application for the applicants are going to be required to contact any business residential or anybody impacted during the time in the area that they're going to be as part of their permits. And I believe we started that today.
Yes. Um, so I actually do have here the approved language, um, from our department. This, uh, application is our excavation permit application. Um, so this highlighted text here, we have added that if you would like to take a look at that, um, I could pass around this page. But that has been added. Um, we, we're on it and we, we do recognize that this is, uh, an issue that we would like to address.
Thank you so much for that. Yeah, some contractors do it, uh, normally. So Excel does that, uh, as, as a matter of practice. But now we're just gonna make it a requirement for, for everyone, just to make it, you know, twenty-four, forty-eight hours notice would be helpful.
I think I got spoiled by Excel and Sidewise because last year we had kind of a ridiculous problem. And we got them and they have their own, this department that sends out flyers, phone call, whatever needs to be done to notify people. So now we're going to do that, make everybody responsible for them. So that'll be every contractor, not even, not just the bigger ones. Any one of the contractors or anyone anything will have to be responsible for that.
And not just on Harrison?
No, no. Every, every place that there will be, there will be lots of contractors.
Yeah. And if I may, uh, our requirements, uh, Sideways, you know, they're a large company. Excel is a large company. They have their own social media. They have a full department that they have created for outreach in Leadville. Um, so we are not going to be burdening our smaller contractors with doing anything like that. It is just a notice. Uh, it, we're not, um, trying to get them to set up a whole thing per se.
I think a smaller contractor is really a little easier for them because they're already working doing private residence, doing something there and there. And so the neighbors would be pretty much aware of what's going on. You know, some of the eight street situations, everybody on the street knows what's going on there. Uh, I had people on phone calls about that, but it wasn't complaints. They were like, what are they doing? Type of thing. So, because all the line in this town are extremely old. Yeah. So we're gonna have that problem for a while.
If I may, I think that Cindy, um, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but we have already, um, since opening May first with our excavation season, we had fifty-three excavation permits that have been issued.
And I have to meet with almost every one of the companies that do that. Uh, today alone, I think I'm at what? Three contractors? I, I, that was because I have to go different places. So you'll probably see in my reports when I'm in scary. Hours are gonna be going up because I'm gonna be, well, I have to go and talk to you guys. Especially keeping inside fires with their road closures and getting their notifications. They have to require, they're required, they have to notify me. And they have to notify the sheriff on any road closures we can see. So emergency, um, EMS is all notified. So just try to keep open safe.
Questions?
I have one question. Thanks, Cindy. Um, did you say at one point that you'd be given a more thorough, um, paving plan? Or did I make that up?
Um, we have a, a plan for this year on, uh, doing some things. But, uh, with our budgeting cut this last year, we have to downsize that a little bit. So it's going to be a little bit of prioritizing. On sections that need to be done, uh, rather than full length sections. Uh, we've got two projects going on at the bottom of Third Street, West Third. And one on, uh, eight hundred block, six, uh, six street. And we're gonna be working with the contractor and with the, uh, I guess, the company's doing, I think it's fifty-two maybe or?
Right. About ten thousand two hundred.
Yeah, ten thousand two hundred. They got a, a small budget. Uh, they've got a small budget to help with the paving costs on that. So we're gonna try and work out. So everything that's done by Parkville and Sturgeon and the electric, uh, the company and stuff, we're gonna do that. We're gonna try and, and we have to help kick in a little bit, get that section done from curb to curb rather than just the potholes overpriced again. So we're gonna try and do them that way. So intersections that, uh, have been potholed to death and we need to think about some of the so we're gonna be just blow our selected on what we thought we were gonna have.
And if you recall, you put twenty thousand dollars in the budget towards a consultant to come up with a full blown, uh, a repaving plan for the city. So that reminds me, I need to add, well, that's part of the strategic plan. But anyway, it's on one of the lists.
Other questions for Mr. McKeen?
I was just gonna add that the Hudson Street sidewalks look great. And we're out there and then last week.
We got lucky to have a couple warmer days. So we just washed down. Oh, we're just practicing that so we can do our curves. Better, you know, my paints and getting everything all ready to go. If we get another nice week. And so I wanted to get it done before Memorial Day weekend, but just, well, it was just a celebration. So get another couple of my stays.
Tomorrow might be our summer again.
Yeah. If you want to get an early start because of traffic, it's gotta be at least above forty-five, fifty degrees or so. So that has been until about nine, three to ten o'clock. So we're still, we're still, uh, we can push it, but I'm not sure. I'd really do one more payment and then everything starts practicing.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah. Other questions for Mr. McKeen? Thank you so much. Let's move on to the police department.
Okay. I'll let you know what the police department has been involved in since I gave my last report to the council. We had a major sex offense investigation and arrest warrants is going to be issued for several felonies. Two foot pursuits, both suspects apprehended. A single vehicle rollover near the fire station. A vehicle was thrown at Camper and Camper flipped onto its side. Drunk driver arrested, child in vehicle, child abuse charges filed in addition to the driving under the influence. Border vehicle accident, their safety, no injuries. One driver fled the scene. Arrest warrant being sought. Arrest warrant for domestic violence case. Uh, arrest warrant sought for a violation of a protection order. The Leadville Police Department assisted the county in a domestic violence homicide investigation. Uh, we're conducting a pornography investigation. It was initiated regarding students sharing inappropriate photos of each other. A suspect was arrested for shoplifting over two thousand dollars worth of merchandise from Big R. Active burglary investigation involved in a local church. Arrest warrant issued and executed for a sex offender from an outside jurisdiction for managed registers a sex offender. He was one of the suspects involved in a hook pursuit. Stolen vehicle from Colorado Springs recovered by Leadville officers. A fugitive from Colorado Springs was arrested in the vehicle. Arrest warrant sought for stalking in violation of a protection order of the suspect that fled the country. Numerous traffic stops for speeding. Many drivers discovered who do not yet have driver's licenses or are driving for a learner's permit. Typically with those we don't cite, we contact the parent to forgive them and we, uh, warn the parent and the child that if we catch them in the future, they'll be cited. We've towed several abandoned vehicles. Uh, on social media, I see people complaining about the things in Lake County and Leadville. One of the things they complain about is law enforcement. The sad reality of the citizens don't feel that their concerns are being addressed, they lose faith in their law enforcement. So all the previous activities, uh, we work hard and we pursue appropriate charges against those who need to be held accountable. Um, photo enforcement. In the future, I would like to bring an ordinance to the city council to possibly, uh, start utilizing photo speed enforcement in our school zones. The school is behind that a hundred percent. So I'm gonna work on that. Uh, I've gone over the police budget very thoroughly and we're looking really good for the year.
All that in the last month?
Yeah. Yeah.
Other questions for Chief Trumper?
There are questions, chief, that you don't necessarily have to answer tonight, but I have been wondering what would be useful data that for us to see in these monthly updates and and I'm not sure what it is. And I just wonder if you have seen examples in your previous work of what, um, can be useful data for elected official decision makers and?
Yes, sir. I need help now. This is a unique problem I'm experiencing in Leadville. Uh, we should probably start tracking data of the underage dragons with no license because we don't want to hammer this kid. But we could use some help from our elected officials, maybe with, uh, educational efforts. And that's one of the reasons why I want to bring up photo enforcement, see photo enforcement programs in Leadville. Because when that kid is speeding in the school zone, the parents are gonna get that ticket. So it's gonna be, and, and let's face it, it's the parents who are allowing these kids to drive. And maybe as we move on, uh, we had an ordinance in Waterloo that was a chronic nuisance vehicle ordinance. Um, let's say a car got three, uh, speed tickets with photo enforcers. And, uh, within a year. And once they got the fourth, we'd show up at the door of the summons, those registered owners, say, hey, your car has a chronic nuisance vehicle in our community. So now it's not for you to appear in front of the judge. And that really seems to people's attention.
I have a follow up question if I may. Um, so related to that, um, collecting data and reporting on it. Do we collect data on like, I, I, I know we do, but in terms of reporting, I, I think I'd personally like to see if it's appropriate, some sort of reporting, um, on what type of response you're responding to, uh, as appropriate and generalized, of course, but um, I, I think that's kind of something that helped me kind of understand what issues our uh, work community is facing, whether it be shoplifting or, you know, home incidents or whatever, some sort of generalized, um, list, uh, you know, that I hear very morbid responses now from a few people about bike, high suicide rates and other such things. I think it'd be important to put kind of a number on, uh, the reality of that. So we're kind of a little bit more aware of, uh, issues going on in our community. So you know, there's certain legislation that could potentially, uh, uh, help some of those measures if and I think it'd be helpful if we're aware of that data, um, if it exists, um, to be notified of that. And if it doesn't exist, maybe potentially some work can be towards that. You know what that might look like in terms of for you all? If any times these numbers are not, they're cooked and wrapped.
I have a question that you also don't need to answer immediately, but I, I received this question, um, not infrequently, is if a car is parked and they have expired registration, sometimes two years old, and it's just parked there, is that, can you, can you cite that?
Yes.
It's not moving and it's just parked.
Yes.
Thank you. I wasn't sure. I was like, it's not driving around.
We came across one last week that's been expired four years.
All right, great. All right. Other questions for Chief? Thank you so much, sir. Let's move on to the fire department. Chief Daley is out of town and so we are joined by Chief Lamond.
Hello. Um, first off, I'd like to apologize for Chief Daley. The reason he's not here today is because he's attending a memorial. And so he had me come instead. I apologize for that. Um, but I will get right into this. So, um, for the department, one of the things that we've done in the last month is close out our AFG or assistance to firefighters grant. Um, the audit, the audit was accepted by FEMA. And so we will get paid forty-four, a little over forty-four thousand dollars um, for ten cents, ten sets of bunker gear. Um, what else have we done? Mayor, you talked, you, you gave a really good description of our child passenger safety seat program. And last month, we had five of our members go through that forty hour class. And, um, and get certified as technicians so that we can, we can install seats and and, um, help ensure the safety of, of our younger population. Um, we have, right now, we have two open engineer positions and a firefighter position. And, um, we have developed a process for promoting and, um, promoting all of those positions. That will happen on Thursday. So we had three positions open. We have four people applying for those positions. All those people are internal candidates. So we know that, um, So we know that um, we know that we're gonna get three new good people in those positions, and that'll be on Thursday. Um, we have been, we've had multiple meetings to prepare for the upcoming, upcoming wildland uh wildfire season. And the biggest uh thing that we did was our annual wildland fire training um field day, where we had almost everybody in our department show up and we practiced uh our techniques with live fire. And um all of our, all of our firefighters are doing an excellent job right now and um I would, I would put up our fire department against any other fire department when it comes to, to putting out a, a wildland fire with, with the equipment, with the resources, with the people that we have. Um. And one other thing, yesterday I went and picked up, I don't have any pictures of our new command vehicle. But we are, we'll be picking up, we've picked up one command vehicle and we'll get the other command vehicle uh in a couple of weeks. Um, it's through the Enterprise um Vehicle Lease Program that the city has enacted. And um where we went and picked it up is where they added the lights, the sirens, the radios, um, the camper shell and the rollout, the pullout uh system. But it doesn't have any decals yet, so it just looks like a, a really nice, brand-new, white pickup truck. But it doesn't look like a, a fire department apparatus quite yet. We'll get your pictures as soon as we get that taken care of. Um, if you look at the packet that Chief Daley put together, there's something new in there this, this month. And it's the monthly activity record by shift. Um, so it starts off, it has A-shift, then it has B-shift, and then C-shift. But um the reason we put this in here was so that you can kind of see some of the things that we do um and that we document other than running on calls, because he always gives you the run, the run report. Um, and so every apparatus that we have gets checked once a week. Um, the, the engine one, the, the first engine that we use gets checked every day and that gets documented. Um, we have all of our firefighters do a tremendous amount of physical fitness. And we document that as well, and that's to um, to keep everybody from getting injured when we do the physical things that we need to do as part of the job. And then we also do some prevention stuff, like the car sheet installs and fire drills with the, with the fire department. Um, and so we're adding that to the list so that you can kind of see what we're doing. Um, and I think that's about it. Does anybody have any questions?
A little intimidated by all this physical fitness routine, I'm definitely not doing enough based on this. Um, are there questions for Chief LaMann?
I would just like to say that I am not doing that either. These, these guys are, these guys are in their twenties, so they're, they're still, there's still some young whippersnappers.
Uh, well, thank you very much, Chief McCon, really appreciate the report.
So uh, the only thing I would make a request is that, Chief, if you don't mind getting some of those photos, we'll include them in the next newsletter for the command vehicle. Super excited that those are finally getting your way.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's uh move on to animal shelter. Let's go.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I'm gonna start by saying that Starbucks gift card scam email was really disappointing, but to date, as of yesterday, we've actually had a hundred and three animals enter the shelter, so it was previously ninety-five, but picked up some um dogs and cats over the weekend that were brought to the animal shelter, so we're now at a hundred and three. As you can see, for April, we had eighteen animals come into the shelter, fourteen animals left. Um, we had the RTOs, which means return to owners, and then we had adoptions of the animals, the twelve animals that were returned to their owners. Ten of them did not have an up-to-date rabies vaccine, and twelve of them did not have a license. So they do leave a deposit and then we follow up, we give them two weeks to get that done, and we follow up with them in two weeks. For our twenty twenty-five intakes, this is from January first to the end of April, so you can see um city and county strays, city and county surrenders. Others are going to be those legal holds, whether that's for the court, um, the owners arrested, the owners in the hospital, anything like that, that's considered other. Um kittens that are born in care, that's also documented as other. Um, and then the overall total is broken or shown there on the right-hand side. For May, we did have fifteen cats and kittens surrendered at the beginning of the month. So this graph will look different, obviously, for next month, but the surrenders is going to shoot up there for the county. And let's see, our current events, we're still working on the portraits in the lobby. So we do have a few shelter staff who are coming together to make a committee for that, our June slumber party. Um, excuse me, we might push that towards the end of June, but we are excited to announce that here in the near future. And then in terms of the strategic plan objectives, two of the four have been accomplished, so the IGA and the Animal Shelter Board. Uh, we do have the first board meeting later this week. And then the two remaining objectives are a deadline of twenty twenty-seven, so obviously working on those now until twenty twenty-seven. One is the sponsorship of adoption fees and purchasing locally when possible. I did previously meet with businesses in twenty twenty-one. Obviously, a lot of people were recovering from COVID, but businesses at that time were more interested in sponsoring things for the animal shelter or the animals that would, you know, say sponsored by Taco Bell, sponsored by Safeway. But I will definitely re-approach this with the businesses to see if they want to sponsor adoption fees. And then the last was for the grants for housing support assistance.
Oh, I, I think you missed one important part of your presentation that we discussed earlier today.
I was gonna do it after questions, but I'll, I'll make a quick little public announcement. Give me one second to grab something. I know. So we are looking for fosters. It is kitten season. So whether you want a teeny tiny baby that you help feed with a syringe every three hours, or you want a more self-sufficient kitten starter pack with a mom, just let us know, we have plenty of options.
Well, I just wanted to do a shout-out. I really appreciate the folks at our animal shelters, so uh, Disco's Co. has approval to appear virtually to this meeting because she is fostering that animal herself. Uh, many of our fosters are great but can't handle a two-week-old kitten, which needs to be fed every three hours, so uh, she took the cat, the kitten herself so that uh she could show it on her meeting today. We're gonna have our first animal shelter board meeting tomorrow, starting with a tour at the animal shelter, really hoping that um Thursday, we, oh, sorry, yes, Thursday, the week's getting away from me. Uh, but I'm hoping we get a few adoptions out of that as well, so, yeah. Uh, oh, we should have a name the kitten contest for money, like Cloud City Wheelers does for the trails.
Yeah.
We should have a name the kitten contest. For five dollars, you can name the kitten.
If it's appropriate to know, uh, who are the people on the board?
Yes, so the IGA specified that the uh current members, there are four current members, so from the city, me and the mayor. And then from the county, I don't know if it's going to be Candace Byrnes or Lauren Snyder, uh, but one of their, and you know, one of their staff, and then I believe Elsa, no, Amy Lee is their commissioner, who is the person on the board. Uh, one of the reasons we're gonna meet this week is to talk about the selection process for the fifth member and what that will look like.
Other questions for regarding the animal shelter? Thank you so much. It's made my day, a little kitty cam. Um, all right, let's move on. Are we doing Sarah's report? Are you handling that or? Ms. Bushman, our deputy city clerk, is also out of town, um, because I guess it's the day for memorials. Um.
I will happily pass along any questions to her that you may have, but uh without, yeah.
Uh, I wanted to, to, she's got, I mean, she has a pretty nice, nice bullet list here.
Yeah, so I'm happy to take any questions back. We have met on a number of the topics, but without belaboring, I've just take any questions and take them back to her if you have any.
Isn't it an easy matter to look at uh business licenses year over year like we look at sales taxes year over year?
I think it will be moving forward. I know one of the things that Ms. Bushman encountered this year, she's trying to um I would just say revolutionize our business licensing. And she, she went through and we had a huge number of places that were no longer in business or places, you know, like, they had just been hanging around.
Well, I'm not sure. I, I think that's partially true. I, I think it happens every year. So Ms. Shear did the same thing. Um, contacted businesses and found a number that would got a business license for one job and were no longer doing business in Ledville anymore. So I think that will be a yearly process that we will have folks who apply for a business license that have moved on to a higher level anymore, so I think that's gonna be a yearly process. I think, yeah, we could track year over year. It's a tough one because you, you know, technically, if you're doing a business, it's within city limits. And, you know, there's new state law on this, but you should have a business license. So there are some contractors who come in, they've done, you know, a year of the work, and now they have no intention of doing any more work in Ledville.
Yeah, it, I think it'd be helpful to see um had a conversation where that came up as kind of one of the reasonings for an increase in sales. Um, tax, uh, just a mass increase in businesses. I, I think it'd be helpful for us to kind of visualize that to see, you know, how much of that holds water, what's going on here.
So a raw number is probably not gonna give you that very much. Um, I think if we get more sophisticated with our software, we could sort from um retail establishments versus contractors versus other types, because I do think potentially a big increase in retail establishments might have an effect on sales tax where, you know, like I said, we, the ones that I remember Ms. Shear coming up with were um a ton of contractors that just came into town for a job, and then they don't do business in Ledville. So you might see a change in number because of that, but it's not, that's not gonna affect sales tax too much.
Makes sense.
And then we also have to include the Wayfair.
No, because that can be sorted out, so we can do remote versus non-remote.
Where our, where our sales tax.
Correct. Well, that's, that's already sorted out. So if you look at the sales tax report, which is very detailed that, that uh Ms. Hewitt's sending you from accounting, you can sort remote versus non-remote, so that's the Wayfair, Wayfair versus non-Wayfair, so that's already, you can already parse that out. What we don't necessarily parse out is, you know, retail versus other, or Harrison retail versus other retail, which, you know, gets back to, we want more bells and whistles and more sophisticated software. Right now, Ms. Bushman is our software. I got it. I got a joke from the gallery. That's, that's. But, but I guess that's the thing is, you know, a lot of this has been manual. So once we get it to the point where it's a little more sophisticated, we can be like, ah, sort, you know, sort Harrison retail, did that bump up significantly or not?
Totally agree.
Yeah, yeah.
Other, other, well, questions for the absent Ms. Bushman? Okay. Um, development and planning, just your thoughts?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, if you'd like to follow along on your devices, um, all right, my monthly department report is on page forty-nine of your PDF there. Um, just have five or six updates for you, so I'll talk about um staffing, the One Community Project Comprehensive Plan, um, just activities of the two commissions with code amendments, et cetera. Uh, a little bit, talk about projects in the housing space and then just some miscellaneous um items are taking a lot of time. So starting off with staffing, I just want to thank the council for uh your support with creating and funding um Miss Cindy Elmore's uh position. And that, that is definitely taking some workload off of um of Andrew Cummins, the permanent official administrative assistant, um, by having that part-time position now within the street department and creating some much needed capacity within the planning department. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Cummins is in the process of training right now. Uh, I just want to thank the, the council for that because it comes at a really crucial time of the year for us. Uh, wanna just give it up the, on the coverings of plan, so we are wrapping up with phase two of five pages with this approximately one-year project. Uh, so right now we're wrapping up the values, part of the project, and value statements. I'm collecting all the data that we received from the, from the public, about eight hundred engagements. Uh, we're workshopping those, um, that data, and so nothing is final. But some of the themes that I can just kind of preliminarily kind of um key you in on, and some of the keywords that are coming out of that, that we're hearing from the community, so um, values related to nature, outdoor recreation, uh ruggedness of our community, uh resourcefulness, our history, and um kind of a hometown, hometown vibe, hometown feel. Uh, there's a lot of work to do. We, um, we have some workshopping to do and uh probably not gonna get it right on the first take, but uh those are just some of the keywords, kind of sneak peek at what we're hearing back from the community in terms of the initial engagement. Last week, we did a joint work session between the two planning commissions with the city and county, and that went really well. We have another work session coming up for the GONC plan in July, early July, and that will precede your work session with the P O C C at the end of July, July twenty-ninth. Um, so your planning commissions will have met twice, um, going into that joint work session with the electeds. So moving on to Planning Zoning Commission, uh, we are working on code amendments right now, mostly related to housing. Um, so the last item, this item are related to your strategic plan. Last week, we had a work session with a consultant and um, and we are preparing to integrate a contract with that consultant in July uh for continuing work on the, the code amendment project related to housing. The Historic Preservation Commission have two or three updates under that commission. Uh, there was a first of two open houses that was held. Last week, we'll hold another open house in July. On the hundred and four uh surveys of historic properties on West Eighth and West Ninety-three, we had a tight turnaround to um to do that open house, so we only have one member of the public attend um through several weeks uh notice when we receive the final submittal from our contractor. Uh, but we'll schedule another open house in July that we hope to have some, uh, some full attendance for. Uh, I wanted, want to celebrate that Commissioner Frank Conen on the HPC um has steerheaded a historic walking tour, digital historic walking tour that's available on the website, on mobile platform. Uh, this is outstanding work by um, by uh one commissioner, a few of our commissioners in, in getting this accomplished. And uh that's in the final stages of development now and I hope that be made available to the, on the city website. Yes.
Oh, I was gonna jump in and just say, uh, Mr. Frank Conen came by today, and we're gonna try and get some information about that in the next newsletter. And I did confirm that we are gonna put him on the agenda for your next council meeting to give you a, a tour of the tour.
Excellent. So, you know, the Historic Preservation Commission has a lot of duties. Um, this is not necessarily one of them. This is really just an example of um your mission is going above and beyond, working outside of regular meetings and their volunteer time to uh to do important work. Um, so just want to celebrate that. Uh, one legislative update from the Historic Preservation Commission, um, or in that, in that realm. Um, so the Federal Historic Preservation Fund, that was, it's been in existence since nineteen seventy-seven. Um, Congress appropriates those funds to the state, and then the state appropriates funds to certified local governments. We are a certified local government. The survey project that I just mentioned for the hundred and four surveys on West Eighth and Ninth Street, that was funded by a certified local government grant. Uh, those funds were supposed to be appropriated for this year, and they have not been, and the proposed federal budget right now from the current administration proposes to essentially um slash that, um, that fund um for next year. And that, so that is a concern because you're um, you have a survey plan, you have a strategic plan, it does identify surveying the rest of our historic structures to understand what our historic structures are in our national historic district. Busy agendas for the HPC through, through the rest of the summer. So you can expect to see a lot of action items on your upcoming agendas. Sorry to wrap up here in terms of housing, in the housing space. I am in preliminary negotiations with a potential developer on a kind of an infill housing project. So this will be your second development agreement. These things, you know, have to be done tactfully. So that's all I can share right now. But just wanted to know that your development agreement ordinance is, is being put to good use. And then last, just other miscellaneous items, things that are taking a lot of time for our department staff. The lifetime temporary use permit applications, we're, we're definitely giving those a lot of attention. And those, you have those on your agenda tonight, one of, one of those applications. And then last update is e-permitting. We are working really hard for e-permitting and really e-code enforcement. So we have online platforms for our members of the public to use. And that's just taking a lot of time to get that, get rolled out, but we want to do it the right way the first time. That's it for me. I can be happy to take any questions instead of you.
Yeah, thank you, Jake. Can, can you? Help me and others understand the stop work order in the graveyard and I. Personally, I largely ask for my own curiosity, but also people ask me about it and I'd love to be able to. To give them a correct answer because I, I think. There's, there's that idea that work can't happen over there, but we see work happening over there. So please speak to.
Yes, I haven't given the council an update on, that update on that in the past few months. Because there hasn't been a lot of action related to that on either the city or the developer side. Generally speaking, there are, there are about three paths of enforcement from the planning department. One of those is related to stormwater. The second is related to required, other required public improvements. So, for example, street trees and landscaping. Irrigation, et cetera. And the third is related to Mountain View Drive, the extension of Mountain View Drive, which is essentially between phase two and phase three. That is, you know, will be required for anyone to develop on phase two and phase three, including fading west runs, the third phase. So those are really your three paths of enforcement. The, probably the most critical item for the developer to complete would, would be. The completion of the stormwater improvements, which at this time is solely just rock lining a swell and captures. Stormwater that comes under the railroad tracks and prevents. Those units on the east side from flooding. We did have structures flood there and that was a requirement that the developer installed and complete that swell. I believe the developer was working on that because the snow melted last week. So that is the update on that. And our enforcement right now is targeted at high country developers and their associated LLCs and entities. And, and of all of the different enforcement tools that we have, provisions that we have within the subdivision improvement agreement. We are using withholding of building permits, new building permits and certificates of occupancy. For high country developers and the associated LLCs. We are not connecting that enforcement with other builders and property owners. There's, there's not a health, safety, welfare concern or reason to withhold building permits and COs. For other, other people who own property and their building units within the rail yards.
So if a lot of there is owned by different, a non, a non-HCD builder. They can still work on there?
There's no, but just to clarify, there's no stop work order for any, any developer over there. As Mr. Johnson is saying, there are a number of tools we can use for enforcement. We at one point used a stop work order as a tool for enforcement and. The developer complied with a few things that we needed. We lived at the stop work order. Right now, we're using building permits and certificates of occupancy to obtain compliance. But right now, there's, there's no stop work order to high country developers right now.
That helps a lot. Thank you.
So in other words, the JP Housing Trust is allowed to continue with the construction of their twelve units and receive a certificate of occupancy. The, the high country, it's, it's a, it's a sub, it's LLC or entity of high country developers who's building the. Well, you're the twenty-eight unit condominium building. And they are allowed to continue with construction, but they're, they're required to complete those items I mentioned by our CEO.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense too. What about the state of the lot that's for a hotel, possible future hotels? Is that?
Corner lot of, of popular East Twelfth. By the way, this that I've heard on that is that the developer is trying to sell that lot to someone. But that's, that, that, I haven't heard any updates on that in many months.
And that's, isn't that? That is part of phase two, correct?
Well, there are, there are two sites that people may have heard as like hotel sites. There were, there, there were hotel developers interested in both sites on phase one and in phase two. Phase two, all of the entitlements have expired.
Yeah, that's what I wanted you to.
Yeah, there, there, and, and there are, yeah, essentially there would need to be a planned unit development, a master plan. There would need to be subdivision permitting. There's a whole slew of tasks that we need for phase two.
That's phase two?
That, yeah, the, those entitlement, there are no entitlements on phase two right now. So phase two would be kind of everything from south of Mountain View Drive and north of the constructed units that you have there.
So there's two sites with potential for like a hotel site, one in phase one, one in phase two?
I would say there's, there's potential for a hotel site on, in, in phase one. In phase two and potential, potentially phase three, but, but phase, you know, those entitlements, you know, the zone, the custom zoning, it would be allowed for phase two. Phase three would come before you still. But everything that had initially started for phase two has, has expired. It's been more than three years.
Okay. So when you, when you say the entitlements expire, it means like that. The P U D plan that was approved and put together is no longer valid. So to do something like that, it would have to come back and.
Correct. Yeah, it's the, it would be the first step in the entitlement process. So right, right now. When you, when the city annexed all of the rail yards. They, the city applied a commercial zoning that has a density of nine units per acre, pretty low density. So if the developer wanted to come in and do something similar to phase one of commercial along the front and then residential on the back, mix of units. They would need to come in and do a planned unit development or P U D. And the P U D that you approved, I think, three and a half years ago. It, it expired and it had conditions of approval that had to be met, approximately ten conditions of approval. Before that document could be recorded and actually become effective. And those conditions of approval were never met. And there, and I believe that one of those ten conditions that included housing.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, and that, that P U D recording and those conditions being met was the first step in their entitlements for phase two. And then they would have to come through for subdivision approval, subdivision improvement agreement, they put up escrow funds, et cetera. None of those subsequent things happened.
I have one unrelated question to that subject. There are multiple, but specifically when I think about homes that are. Even if they're homes or garages, they're just buildings in our town that are so incredibly dilapidated that you can see inside of them from. Outside of being part, to the point to where there's genuine fears of one hit snowstorm knocking them down. What is our process in terms of like that being a potential safety hazard? For us reporting that and also. Like to what extent are we allowed to do something about that? Because the, you know, there's specifically on my street right that a building that has been that way for a long time, but. Like completely transparent and see through super old building. Literally on the verge of falling anyway, could potentially part of people were just walking by.
So there's two, two, two thoughts that come to mind. One is within the zoning code and then one would be kind of started within the zoning code, but then extend other enforcement agencies. So the first would be something what you call like demolition by neglect. We practically do not have a demolition by neglect ordinance under the works. That's not something that we are, that we are enforcing. You know, we do not have a code enforcement officer who is, who is out trolling the streets looking for those types of violations. So we are, we are operating on a complaint basis. So that is the first start, but practically that, that is, that is, is not in practice. The second part there would be an unsafe, unsafe buildings ordinance. So the city does have. An ordinance that says if a building is deemed to be unsafe by either the chief building official, Lake County Government, through our IGA. Or, or the fire marshal, then if an order can be issued for, for demolition. It's more complex than that, but that's the, the quick solid.
Good questions. I feel like I had one burbling somewhere and then I was just overwhelmed by all of this good information. So. Maybe I'll remember like the three items. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let's move on to finance.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman, and the town. I'll just give you some quick highlights of my report. And then we can move into any questions on financials. Go through that part now and then just visit yourself in the budget. And so first thing I have for tonight is that I was able to transfer seven hundred and two thousand. Friendly operating fund for checking account, main checking account to Colorado Trust. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that was to pay back amounts transferred earlier this year to cover funding expenses for the Taylor Opera House. And let me introduce, with an additional five hundred thousand being transferred. As the amount in the operating account exceeded over a million dollars in support of day-to-day operations or operating expenses at this time. Being as of like six hundred items. So I figure we might have a workforce in that trust and a little interest on that. That's sound where you're going at a requested laptop that scrolls or that is whatever. The general fund overall expenditures are in line with the normal budget, third year-to-date totals. Payments from the county for property taxes and that's. Left us with a little bit of surplus in the main checking account. So I was able to transfer that and, and a lot of interest. Fire fund expenditures are running over budget. Again, this is primarily due to a budget of the grants for wildlife fire deployments. And of course, they had a deployment earlier this year that we don't typically do until fire season. So that is why that was running over and we will. End up doing this up in the budget, but we applied because those are. But it's still in the pickup. I'm upstairs, my door's rather closed. Oh, it says do not disturb, but I will take visitors. Just sit down. I get by a little time with the auditor and we'll be here and then sweetie other. So those are my big highlights of the tree siding in my world, lots of spreadsheets and representations. If you'd like me to add two questions on the financials, sales tax.
Questions?
Thanks, Crystal. It seemed like the legal lease payments were disproportionate, like. They were at forty percent of the budget and it's like thirty-three percent of the year has elapsed. Are those, do you think, going to be higher than they expected? Or is it like they cost more at first and then it's less loud, louder?
So some, some of the items that were unrenounced during the budget process is that all of our fleet is in Enterprise. So I have the budget numbers for the vehicles that we're getting, but we did not have these. Numbers that they're charging on a monthly basis for all of our fleet in their contraction with maintenance and. All of that good stuff. So there is some additional expenditures that we didn't, we just didn't budget for. And with some of the delay of getting vehicles and getting them outfitted, some of that stuff has also come over into the twenty-five budget. Rather than the timing where we get in twenty-four.
Good questions?
And just to raise, I had a meeting with Rachel Barnwell, who's our fleet management contact person. At Enterprise and this is our first venture into this. So we're going to be meeting with her earlier on to help. Figure out these numbers, how, what they might look like for twenty twenty-five. They understand this is our first time doing a whole fleet program. And so I let her know, we want to meet with her and. Put this together earlier in the process and to make our finance director go less crazy during budget season. So that we can appropriately account for all of this and have it done earlier.
Okay. Do you want to go to sales tax comparisons? Is everybody just not looking at the, the bar graph?
So the reporting period is April, but it doesn't, this is March. So I think we all kind of expected that with the numbers. Visitors that we have seen are first joined. And it just seems like it's really great because like how we can do the fixes. So. And if we keep going, like this whole year thus far has been up and, you know, I, I just did a quick. Takeout, if we, we stay on this path and by the end of the year, I think we can get going. You know, we, we deal with the digital features, we'll just keep an eye on. That I have a chance to keep about keeping tours and slowing down. So we might start seeing impact.
Good question. What's kind of your assessment with the potential of the, I guess it's not potentials, everything but confirmed at this point of, of how much? Are we losing the mining tax? Are we in an okay position, knowing that we're not going to meet that budget number that we have, given our current sales tax numbers? Or?
I think, I mean, if we were just looking at numbers right now and if we were projecting based on what we've seen. I would say yes, but I would have to guess on the roll to start paying those ten and two. And, you know, as we get six months into the year. And we're looking at department budgets and working with the city administrator and department, whether or not we need to maybe reel in some things. And see what the state of that within the budget.
Yeah, I, I'm interested in that. Mayor, do you mind forwarding me the information about the webinar more? All we got was, don't expect what you budgeted for your severance tax and knowing what that means. Does that mean we're only going to get half? Does it mean we're going to get none? All we know is we budgeted two hundred and twenty. Right now, we're running over in sales tax. It was a hundred and thirty thousand before the April. Report that I got. So we're, if we get zero severance. We're running over sales tax, maybe, maybe it would be a wash, but if sales tax dips, then we're down. Okay, I'll find it. So if you look at our severance tax over time, this is, I know if you remember, Councilor Glouliya. We, I, we dug into it when Mayor Lobby was here because we were saying it fluctuates. And we don't understand if it fluctuates based upon our local mine or if it fluctuates based upon state. or if it fluctuates based upon state extraction. And uh Mayor Green found that wonderful article and sent you all information on how it is calculated. You know, it's essentially statewide extraction. And what happens is the state can rate that money. And so that's why we've been fluctuating. I think a couple of years, it was only eighty thousand dollars. So that's why I kind of threw off that number. I have no idea what it would be.
One of the things that I left out of that thing I set around is that co- companies themselves can do things to lower this tax that they owe. So if they're doing some of their, you know, upgrade or improvement or whatever, they can, there's a, a number of deductions that they can modulate the taxes that they owe. And so when a bunch of them do that in the same year, then there's just less severance tax available.
I guess the good news is that we, it's only two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's still purple.
Yeah. We probably look at the contributions and we get to.
But overall, the departments are doing well. Uh I meet with each department every two weeks and we've been going over budgets. Some things you'll see on their budgets are at a hundred percent. Perhaps they've already renewed all their dues and memberships, so they'll be at a hundred percent for that. That may make them track overall at the bottom of their budget, a little bit above where we are. Things to think, um keep an eye on, like Council member Tharp's question was a good one about lease payments, things that are constant month to month. If those are above, then we worry about that. So like salaries, um repeat costs like that. But otherwise, I think we're doing, I think all the departments are doing well. And uh, uh Ms. Hula's been sending out department reports, finance reports to every department so they can like, just theirs, not cool. So they can, they can definitely keep an eye on where they are and everything. What happens is if we run low or on the sales tax, we'll have to say it's not good enough that you're on track with your budget. You're going to have to comment below.
Um I did, I kind of going to include um the uh sales tax by industry uh for the first four months in there as well. So you can come see how by industry, things are changing um from the beginning of the year through April. When we get through um Q two, I'll do another comparison of, of Q uh Q quarters one and two for twenty-four versus quarters one and two twenty-five, similar to what I did last month for that first quarter. So we can kind of see by industry, um how we're tracking year over year for those two years.
Yeah, it's really helpful to see that. Thank you so much.
Any, anything else, questions, moments? Would you like to pay some bills? Let's pay some bills. Other questions on the bills, first of all? There are no questions. Now we're entertaining motion to pay bills.
No more revenues to pay the bills?
Thomas seconds. All in favor? Great, thank you. That's really good because they've already mentioned. It is, it is eight o'clock and we're going to take just a brief break at eight. Did you have to pick one now before we get into our action items? Okay, five minutes.
Anyone needs a little spiked blood sugar? I got some syrup patch kids.
Um while we're on this break, I will go ahead and use the audio. Okay, now we are back.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. Um our first action item is a certificate of appropriateness for a partial demolition and addition. This is a public hearing. So we'll make it official. Good evening. My name is Dana Green and I am the mayor of the city of Leadville. This is a public hearing before city council to consider a certificate of appropriateness application by Ian Munoz and Sophie Reese for a partial demolition and foundation stabilization at the property known as one three-nine East Ninth Street. When the public hearing is opened, I will first attend to some preliminary housekeeping matters. I will then ask for staff to discuss highlights of the staff report, followed by the applicant to make a brief presentation of their proposal, followed by public comments from members of the public in attendance. The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, which is the applicant's opportunity to respond to any comments made by members of the public. After rebuttal, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Once the public comment portion of the hearing is closed, we will not accept public comments unless it is in response to questions posed by the council with the applicant and the city staff. Staff will then have an opportunity for clarification or rebuttal, which is the staff's opportunity to respond to any comments made by the applicant or members of the public. Council members will then have an opportunity to ask questions of staff and the applicant. At the conclusion of our questioning, the council will deliberate and render a decision, which could include a continuation of the hearing. This public hearing is quasi-judicial, which means that we have to follow certain procedural requirements to establish a record. For this reason, it is important that we be, you identify yourself and please state your physical address. If you would like to submit written materials, please understand that the city will have to hold on to these materials for at least thirty days after city council renders its decision. Are there any questions about our public hearing procedure? Seeing none. I will now open the public hearing for one three-nine East Ninth Street, certificate of appropriateness for a partial demolition and foundation stabilization. Applicants Ian Munoz and Sophie Reese. At this time, I ask the city council members to disclose any expertise, communication, or conflict of interest with the applicants. There are none. Will staff please present the report now, ladies?
Uh good evening again, Mayor and Council. Uh I think this is a very straightforward application, so I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. Um this um the proposal was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. For one of just the, the key components is making sure that the additions that are, uh that were built on the rear of this property at some point in time uh were deemed to be non-storic or, or non-contributing, in other words, suitable for demolition. That was the key part. Um so um the Historic Preservation, Preservation Commission is recommending to you tonight um your approval of this application. I'll just describe a little bit about what is being proposed. Uh so this property is um is actually somewhat fairly visible. When you get your historic district from the north side of town, it's just one lot removed from the corner of Poplar Street and East Ninth Street. And you see here on the screen its location, location within the historic district. The uh front of the house looks like this. It's been heavily modified over the years. Um I'll show you the scope of work that is proposed. Uh there's, there's been a series of additions that have been added on um since their eighteen, uh eighteen eighties to the rear of the building and even to the front of the building. And uh the applicant is essentially proposing to remove those, some of those rear additions to make this property more livable for the property owners so they can add a rear addition in the future. Right now, they need to go through and demolish um these modules that have been added on over time in the rear and add a, add a proper foundation underneath this historic home to, um to support it. Uh the specific scope of work is kind of shown here in this image um in terms of the demolition. That's the, that's what the, the rear of these, uh the structure looks like. So the Historic Preservation Commission um did recommend um approval to you. There was a work session held with the applicant to talk about um not just this currently proposed good work, but um also the future addition, uh which um is not before you tonight, but is anticipated to look um something like this in the future. Um so just to give you um some indication of what would be coming down the line and the reason why the applicant is going and doing a, an addition, uh demolition on, partial demolition on the rear of this historic house. Uh so with that, I will refer you to your motion, including your packet on page one oh two. And that is a motion for approval recommended from the PC. I can take any questions.
Any questions for sale? Well, let's move on to applicant presentation.
Uh good evening, everybody. Uh thanks for the time today. My name is Eric Kepelius. I have a project letting the client uh part of the COA. Uh I guess the main thing I just wanted to hit on, I just keep it brief, this does seem fairly straightforward, is that uh these additions are in very poor condition. Uh and the most important thing to note is that um currently there's not the ability to perform any type of building maintenance between this property and the neighborhood itself, uh which is also why the neighbors of the south changed their last HDC meeting in support of demolition of these, uh these additions. And then there's also a, a note uh that these rear additions being proposed for demolition uh basically city and um um sorry, I'm forgetting the term for the other uh members of the uh advisory commission, uh or advisory members, my apologies. Uh also agree that these rear additions from that architecture is um helping available for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Goofus? Does seem pretty straightforward. At this time, I'd like to open the public comment portion of this hearing. Is there anyone in attendance in chambers who would like to offer public comment regarding this particular uh COA application? Seeing none, is there anyone online who would like to offer public comment on the COA application? Okay, seeing there is no public comment, I would, we're going to take a motion to close the public portion of this public hearing.
Who wants to close the public comment motion of your public hearing?
Thomas seconds. All in favor? All right. Uh there really is no, uh unless there's further questions for the staff, um there's nothing really to rebut or clarify because I can see at this point. Okay. Um in that case, if there are no further questions from council, um I would entertain motion.
Thomas moves that city council approve the Munoz Reese Residence Demolition and Foundation PL dash twenty twenty-five dash zero two one, located at one thirty-nine East Ninth Street, along with the attached lines and conditions of the code.
No, 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 seconds.
Roll call, please.
One second. Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Uh Mayor Pro Temp Tharp?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Linnalia?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Now we get to our second action item, which is considering the temporary lease permits of the, for the lifeline marathon, the half marathon, the biking camp, and the running camp, all otherwise known as the non-one hundred. Do you have anything, Council? Oh, I think we're going to see if there's any.
Oh, I think we're going to see if there's any. Yeah. So, you will have my council communication form on page 135 of your packet. It just outlines a brief background information, including, I definitely want to touch upon the fact that these are four separate TUPs for each of these events. So, please keep in mind, by motion, I do believe they can be passed together, but you can also separate them for any reason. Over the past few months, staff and lifetime have worked really hard to make sure that these were the best applications put before the council. And I think we did a very good job. And unless anyone, any other staff would like to add anything. I think that's the conclusion of my work. I will actually mention, sorry, in my staff report, I did specify that I was going to have a meeting with the streets department on Monday. So, you do not have any comments from the street department in your staff report. I did have that meeting, I talked with Tony, our streets department manager. Everything that was outlined in the applications has been approved by Tony, our streets department manager. So, if there's any other questions that you have to answer.
Questions for Mr. Kepelius?
All right, with that, I'll turn it over to
Want to walk us through?
I am so sorry to interrupt you again. Yes, so there is one other thing. Because the 10K run is looked in with the same weekend as the bike race, that TUP, even though it is a non-100, the 10K racer will be lumped in with the 100 bike and 100 run. So, you will not see that.
For that clarification.
Thank you, sorry.
I can't just lump themselves so tightly. Sure?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor. I did not, did not, not going to go over the other part because it's nice and straightforward, so I just want to really answer questions. The camps are the same as they've been, so walking through that, like with this first June 12th to 15th, we have approximately 125 people by the time we all get here. They will all be contained for the most targeted Leadville retail store area in those papers there and/or on course. So, we have one request from the chief, which was for a meetup on Saturday morning to make sure that we get through the light here without causing any disruption. We have discussed that with him, he has approved that. Don't expect anything different there than normal. You will see extra toilets at the racer's store, we will be there probably the whole summer. Open to ideas on other places to put them as we talk through these TUPs tonight as well on the city, in the old corridor here. But nothing different there, Run Camp, do you want me to stop there? Patty, want to do this? Do we go through them all, kind of do this? Run Camp, nothing significantly different here either. Friday night is our run from May Queen into town, so we do have folks coming in at 9:00 here. We'll have, they'll have headlamps and they will be, we'll have staff out to retail stores to greet them. Then everything after that, they'll be bussed, so we bust them out there that night. The next day, we bust them up, so you may need to start from there and they go to the next. Everything within that point on is outside of here and will be contained outside of the city forever. Nothing changed there, don't need any resources for those pieces, we need those components for either one of those events. Again, about 125, 130 people, including our guys, so the site is also in there. If we're good there, we'll go to Marathon and Marathon Heavy Half, we split them up as you requested. So, you get two different events, but they're operating under the same operations plan. You will see us start the Marathon at 6:30. The Heavy Half on 9:30, we have them bumped back to 9:00, just to make sure that we have a little bit more of the way on the mosquito pass side in terms of where they get down. Little bit of concern as we move into climate changes here, what we're going to see up there with preliminary work, the search and rescue, law enforcement to just think through, what are we doing with our friends down in Peublo at Noah to just talk to. So, we have these interesting plans in place to stay on top. This is our most exposed event, right, which is not really your guys' territory, but just so we're all aware of what happens. This is our most exposed event for the longest time, so it's one of our biggest safety concerns to think about. Big changes we've added along the way. Of course, it's a change unless the snow doesn't go away. If the snow doesn't go away, we can get it away. We will have snow rafts, just keeps us either up to the landing below mosquito back, and it's all going to sustain for, or nothing changes in the snow part of that. We've added restrooms, porta-cots along Sixth or along, states going up and where it turns to go over to Fifth. So, we've added pots up there over the last couple of years as requested. Really happy, actually, I think I added a couple more in there this year, I had a couple more along the corridor of Fifth Street as you get up to the middle belt and to the two-way section. We are always willing to open to add more in those arenas. We have more in the Expo this year as well, to just accommodate those pieces. There's really not anything major, we will have, we got to talk through it with Sheriff, begin with the chief in terms of law enforcement at the Poplar and Sixth Street, so that was a request. We requested two, I believe, from Six to Twelve or Six to Ten, and one from Six to Six, which I mentioned would probably be himself. So, we'll have that support and that's all on the team as well in the application. And that will manage the Poplar. You'll also see us piloting sort of this, we've been working pretty hard with many committee meetings, the group of Leadville locals, so you will see us sort of pilot this idea of the Leadville local group out there during that on the Poplar and Sixth Street corridor and just being out talking with the with the crews and the folks, because it does get very congested, so we want to pilot that and bring it into the hundreds and the sixth street corridor in that area. So, you'll see some extra folks, some fancy shirts, I'm not sure what color, some of us are purple, some of us are orange, we're starting to debate. Anyway, all things are looking well on that front, so nothing else is significantly different, what can I address? Questions? And we will have, we'll try to locate shotgun show that has less banging for the ball. How many, I know it's buried in here and I could be looking at it right now. How many participants do you have for the heavy half? It is set to start on the date 50, which probably means we'll have a setup underneath. We're not, and I'll be real honest with you, we're going to journey on this together. Like, we're watching changes in the kind of pickup numbers and it is not making a sense since COVID, so it's not something we had a 92% pickup rate in Ciutat, which is bizarre and high. And we have consistently with Silver Rush and the Marathon the last few years had a lower pickup rate. And so, and not necessarily bad, but just like, we not necessarily know exactly until we get there and there's a lot. And this year, we have some pretty big impacts in terms of these travels, so we're pushing hard to get them here. Hope they're here to spend their dollars, but essentially, we don't know, I will have to report back and tell you what it was. What's the pickup rate? How many people actually show for the registration pickup? They're going to pay money and do something. Well, when the travel, when the travel thing showed, so somebody bought a ticket from the east coast. Yeah. And then, you know, that, the registration piece was 150 bucks, but the plane ticket was whatever it was, right? So, it impacts things, we see that changing. All right. Other questions? I just want to double check and make sure from our city attorney, Mr. Hartman, do you have any problems with us approving all of these together?
No, I'm fine with that. Just can you just name each, I think, and I was looking at, I think your suggested motion, you just say all of them individually, but otherwise, you can do it in one motion, just make sure you say all four.
Oh, my gosh, I've lost.
146 of your packet.
Yep, sorry.
Volume page. And I think they are four, yeah, they're, that motion has them named separately, it's four individually.
Right then. Would anybody like to pick that up?
I'll notice the crew before temporary lease permits for LTF, I thought it's series LLC. Those events within Leadville City limits, including the Marathon, the Heavy Half, Trail 100 Run Camp, and then Trail 100 Mountain Bike Camp, Camp of Champions.
Thomas seconds. Roll call, please.
Council member Lina Lea.
Yes.
Council, council member Hill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Thar.
Yes.
Mayor Green.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want, we should have a camp of champions.
Let's want to say thank you to the, like our folks for looking through all of our questions and getting these every year. It will, I think, get easier, but just appreciate you working with us on our deadline, so we get this on the agenda for you tonight.
No problem, and then we're thinking for the hundreds, June.
Yep, so we have you
Seventeenth is what we currently have.
Right, so, yep. We wanted to have the same internal meeting to go over them line by line like we did before, so we expect another document. Hopefully, just with any questions or concerns that we have, we're putting you on the seventeenth, just so that I can do the internal meeting, I'm going to be out for a little while. And so, we'll have you on the agenda for the seventeenth.
Right, and thanks everybody for your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to action number C, which is Resolution 15, our resolution to approve a supplemental budget. I'm going to ask Ms. Hewlett to come up and just give us a little brief breakdown of the details. You also have a handout.
Down in the line items.
I just leave that pretty far. Okay, here. Hello. And so, one of the reasons that we can do a supplemental budget is for one that's required by the state through the Department of Labor there, ZGOL. And local governments are subject to the Local Government Budget Law, which is Colorado Regarding Statute 29-1-101, which must follow statutory procedures to apply for spending in excess of appropriations or spending in order of the budget. So, anytime we go over that budget, we have to do a supplemental budget with that limitation. Once approved, then I will, I'm required to approve that with the state. So, any of your lawyer, but anybody in the meeting is not lawyers, why we do a supplemental budget, we are required if we've gone over appropriations.
Can I just interject what's just right there? So, we do it, our practice in the city has just been to do this once. Other jurisdictions do this every time they are going to go over for one item, they can do a supplemental budget. So, if you hear about cities doing supplemental budgets a lot, it's, there's no requirement when you do it. So, let's say, you know, we, one of the things we did is we did $200,000 last year of property tax money to full circle. You can do a supplemental budget at that time to reflect that. We, our practice has just been to do it.
Right, there are local governments who do it on the video, so it's a, so I'm going to do that. But we could have that option if we, you know, we wrote, you know, two weeks, we would do supplemental budgets throughout the number.
So, that's the big budget list. Money that we spent last year.
Correct, so the supplemental budget is for 2020, 2024, where expenditures exceeded our budget for the year. There's some quick guides, there is a communication page on, page 196 of the packet. And just some highlights for why we are doing this supplemental budget. We didn't go over our expenditures. And the general fund by
669.
Okay, I need these and then I don't need these and whatever, and I'm tired, as I'm sure all of you are. So, both of our items that cause us to be over budget for 2024 is that we did see those large insurance claims that were unbudgeted. They were an unexpected expenditure. We did receive revenue to offset have a revenue boost payment, so we, we have to report that. We also do not budget for grants unless we absolutely damn it, we still not regaining. So, in brackets, we come throughout the year. Still, there is a lot of zero budgeting grants that we did receive money for. So, then we receive revenue for those, but we have to pay those expenditures for that grant, so we'll see that. As Ms. Simon said earlier, we did contribute $200,000 to move full circle because we had a surplus of property tax, unbudgeted. Again, it causes us to go over in our I don't remember the line item, but for our nonprofits and partners within our community. So, those are the big ones on the general fund. On the private fund, we currently do not budget for all the training expenses or the wildfire expenditures. So, those cause us to do something to budget, since we already standard for a seismic seed in the city. That is something that I would like to change in 2026. We have, we have enough data, we can come up with some of those travel numbers, the lower one, and then a budget control, right? Best guess, so, so that maybe we can move away from doing supplemental on those things that we have some data for. Again, I did pass out a review one by one, people look at. It is all apartments, revenue and expenditures. So, there's a thing to take very long to look at, you get down the line, and if you have questions on what is in there, you can put it in the chatroom. If you're able to take it as a guide. So, if I'm reading, the staff highlight correctly, the general fund revenues went up. It did. And that's the number you just said, 669, 518. So, we did receive revenues for those insurance claims, our property tax, because the we didn't get those final numbers, so we were going to have the best guess at that time of the information we had. So, our property taxes are trying to actually increase the revenue, and then they grant that we did some budget. And so, obviously, our expenditures went up too, but by a lesser amount than our revenues. If I'm doing my math correctly, at 8:30 at night. And on the page 198, the resolution, I did a breakdown of the original budget. There in the mail, a chart with the general fund, the source of the expense, as well as the purpose and the initial budget, and the new budget. I'm not sure if we have any history for that, same with the private fund. Questions on the supplemental budget?
There's a line item in City Hall expenditures that says supplemental budget appropriation. What for, 283,000, what does that mean?
Wait, what was the dollar amount?
383,411.
That was for the Housing Authority and it was the two line items, I think, that went into that. And we've changed how we think under Ms. Hewlett, we did that. But that was for the Regional Housing Authority, I think $300,000 went to the Regional Housing Authority, and I believe the remainder went to the county for the transit program.
Right. 300,000 was to the county. What do you say, they've advanced, so, yeah, maybe housing, and then the other and those are the counties. And those are the two items in.
Mr. Cohen says I get two sour patches for getting that question right.
Think we now know how to, how to approach the city and news, but asking where wants to think. Okay. Other questions? If y'all are comfortable, we're going to have a motion to approve Resolution fifteen.
Councilmember Lam moves to approve Resolution number fifteen, series of twenty twenty-five. The resolution of the City Council of the City of Lethville approving the twenty twenty-four supplemental budget, amending the adopted budget to reflect revised revenues and appropriated expenditures as detailed in the resolution and supporting documentation.
Five seconds. Roll call, please.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Una Leo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. That ends our, our actions for the evening. Is there any public? Yes. Would you like to give a public comment at the tail end of our meeting?
I was happy to do this and I'd like to thank whoever did that. There was some cleanup behind Doc Collard's dumpster pair near the Scarlett and the alley that's the side of the Tabor parking lot. It was pretty hideous. I kept thinking about how I was going to do that and I needed to act and somebody did. So it's, it wasn't a perfect job, but it was a very, very good job. And since we're looking at that, does the city own the parking lot behind the paper and the park ramps? Yes, it does. Okay. So with this idea of the charging stations, and since that alley is not really a critical alley, I was hoping maybe we could move forward and landscape that and pave it. So it's part of that parking lot thereby extending the parking lot by whatever footage that alley is. There is two problems with that. There have been some rocks, large rocks deposited so that access to the northern lot is, you can't drive across there anymore. Those rocks need to be removed. And then there's a telephone hole at the west end of that alley and some kind of an electrical box. Those things need to be figured out. And the telephone hole looks like it's pretty much in the alley. But if that could be appropriated and added to that lot, that gives some extra footage. Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you, Steve. So the public comment for the end of our meeting? Yes, sir.
You said a quick follow-up. Realized had some specifics regarding the EV charging. I just wanted to bring up. So thank you very much. Councilmembers for allowing me to borrow a few more minutes of your time. So just as far as the timeline and understanding that items need to be added to the strategic, strategic plan, which is why I want to provide some of those concrete details. So the total estimated cost of installing six chargers was around nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So the grant provided by the Card, the Card Energy Office is seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we secured the additional around two hundred thousand dollars to be able to get this completed. The timeline on the grant is around eighteen, eighteen months to be able to get that installed. And so this really is a pretty amazing opportunity. However, while that seems like a really long time, we work hand in hand with Excel, which will need to upgrade the utilities and transformers can be twelve months, twelve, fourteen months backlog right now. So timing is something that while there's time to be able to get this thing up and running, we don't have a lot of time. Which is why I asked that it's considered as part of the strategic plan. And I can try to come up with some more specific information about the economic impact that I can present to you between that and your strategic needs. So anyway, I really appreciate that.
You should throw the whole meeting to me by your comment.
That's some staying power.
Is your car charging? You just have like.
All right. Let's move on to Mayor's report. I Councilmember, or excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Tharp had brought up the question of if we could use accommodations tax revenue and direct it towards things like homeless services, et cetera. I think I sent all of you the communication from our attorney and said I would put this on our agenda within the next couple to discuss. I just want to say I didn't get it until the middle of June. So our second meeting in June. His next meeting looks a little intimidating to me, but we'll get there. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that I went to the youth summit, which was a presentation by our area youth primarily through Full Circle and Village Generation on different topics. That was, I'd never been to one before. I didn't really know what to expect, but it was incredibly educational. They had a station on drug use by youth. They had a station on kind of how youth spend their time after school, what they would like to spend their time on, what resources they would like available. And they had one on overcoming language barriers. And it was, it was amazing. It was amazing. So that I think rolls around every year and.
Can I interject? Oh, thank you so much for the reminder. I'd forgotten about that. So Ms. Barrett and I attended that and happened to be sitting at the same table on drug use and the students presenting did fantastic job. And then they opened the table up to comments about, you know, what, what, what measures could be taken to help kids not go down that path. And our group, our table came up with a space that, that, plainly that, that students could go to. And that, that would be very helpful in keeping kids out of trouble. And I asked a question out. I can't remember what I asked and the student said, oh, the proof before you said the same thing. So I just want to tell you, there is still that need, the thing that we're trying to pursue with the indoor recreation that we're trying to pursue with the community. Ms. Barrett and I sat and looked at each other. You know, if Exhibit A was the kids who broke into the building because they had nothing better to do. Exhibit B is the kids actually putting use on it together, saying having a space would help them prevent, you know, some kids from going down the wrong path. I, I think it's Exhibit B. So it was really heartwarming, I think, for us. I think it's been a long road on indoor recreation. There's been a lot of people working on it. I still think it's a really important thing to work on. And this youth summit was just another example of the need.
I, I found that also echoed in, because I went to the, the table where they presented their, their, I think they interviewed like over a hundred kids with a whole bunch of different questions. How you work after school, how much, you know, if you work on the weekends, do, what do you do after school, do you go on sports teams, ZGOL? It was really great. And what shook out of that, and they really kind of focused on the kids who don't have, like, they're not linked to the sports teams or they're not working. And it really, again, just sort of echoed what Lori just said is, you know, we want, we want to have a space. We would love, love to have a place to just go chat. We would love to have a place to watch a movie, you know, and, and they had a whole list of things that they were interested in having available to them in town. And so I went over after that, I took the little pack that they gave me and I went over to Lori and I'm like, this, you know, like this needs to go in the recce group to talk about indoor recreation.
Is that something that can be present in our work session with the school district and the county?
Which part of it?
The data. Specifically, I'd like to see the, the survey, like, the data they, they like to consider.
Okay. I can get, I can get copies of that.
Right. So, well, what I would, yeah, so share it around and then actually get it to Ms. Barrett, because she's the person who's coordinating the presentations for that. And what we want to make sure is that, that the presentations for that work session aren't individual presentations. They are joint, a joint presentation. So, yeah, that would be fantastic.
I prepared these shared with councilmembers so I can just reveal them later on.
I think at our last indoor rep meeting, which was preparation for this work session, we identified the need to synthesize all the different reports and stuff. And so I would hope, and it'd be great to call up with her, I would hope Lauren would, that would be one of the many reports that gets synthesized into like the proof of need.
Yeah. And I, I think that's absolutely. And I think we've heard it a lot. And yeah, Councilmember Tharp, you're in a lot of different places. Yeah, synthesizing that.
Okay. Just myself a little bit. The third thing that I have is really as much a reminder to me as to all of you who has not completed the SERSA training. It is due June second, which is the day before our next meeting. So yes, we have our NOMU for which is due next week. But the SERSA training is several modules and they're, and they're all, they're each about an hour long. So you really have to plan for that. So please remember to do that. I literally just started saying. That's all. Yeah. Council reports. Anybody?
Yeah, there's always. I'll start with good news. We did our coffee with electeds event and it went pretty well. You know, it was mostly great, good conversations. Really good turnout, very engaging conversations with people. I think it was very, very productive, to be honest. And I think for the majority of it, it felt worthwhile. So as of literally two minutes ago, we are confirming for the twentieth of next month, which is a Friday from eight o'clock to eleven o'clock at before and after. So that will be there again. Leave the flyer and send it out as soon as they can. But it was a wildly successful event. And I just want to share our gratitude for Christine Street to be able to provide that space for us and provide their coffee for people for charge, if that's a barrier for anyone. So keep that in mind going into next one. We did receive some good feedback about maybe exploring other venues. A little bit more exciting venues. So I will look into that as time allows. But it's not off the table. Also potentially considering other hours that are more available to different people. So just keeping that in mind as time goes on and hopefully at some point it can just be a reoccurring thing that no one necessarily has to fully maintain. But rather just like, it's on top of showing up as much as one can, of course.
Is there any county?
None. I will end up to the fact that I do not like. No shade to them.
Is the elected city clerk expected to go to that?
More than welcome to.
I don't think there are any expectations.
No.
Just curious.
Get your name type.
If you'd really like to, you're more than welcome to. Otherwise, just showing your voice.
Hypothetically.
Yeah, a little bit less exciting news. Today in the morning, there was a confirmed incident of federal agents connecting immigration detainments in Eagle County. Some of the people detained are, are not, are people that our community knows very well. And um, it's just a reminder that this is, you know, gonna hit close to home. The trends that we've seen so far is that they've been targeting workplaces. It seems like that's the easiest place for them to enter in without a judicial warrant. Though that is not exclusive as this specific area was more so targeting a mobile home partner. So keep that in mind as we go on. It is possible that our community will be impacted, whether it be at those workplaces as the vast majority of our community does commute in general, but especially our Latino community. It is a potential that this will impact one way or another, whether it be directly here in Lake County or in our surrounding counties where our immigrant community can. This, of course, can have a very negative impact on the families here, on the children who go to school here, but their parents commute. And you know, needless to say, our economy, of course, that does depend on this labor to continue to survive, especially in such a high tourism economy. These people tend to work the jobs that provide for those areas such as restaurants, hotel, or in such as construction that can keep our communities going. So these have real, real impacts. They will have real economical impacts if it continues to go that way. And it is likely that this will impact us one way or another. And we just need to be aware of that. And yeah, I, there are resources, if anyone wants to talk about anything, we're happy to in ways that we can be involved. So just keep that in mind. On the same note, Senate Bill two seventy-six was passed through the House and the Senate, and it is waiting for governmental or another government, the governor to sign it. And so the man has not signed it. If you are interested, the bill essentially, and I'm, you know, very, very broadly covering it. So it's definitely more detailed, but essentially will cover data and privacy on data, making sure that data is not shared without a judicial warrant. So if you are interested, I think it'd be very beneficial to individually endorse it as individual councilmembers. I already have and submit that endorsement to the governor. One of the arguments is that they do not want to force municipalities or any other locality to do something. This is in my perspective, just following these practices. We are not going above and beyond in anything. We are simply following this practice for people's individual privacy and individual data. Asking for a judicial warrant to execute those is not ahead of the left on our end.
Which one was that?
This is Senate Bill two seventy-six. So two seventy-six. As individual councilmembers, we can individually endorse these bills and send those letters to the governor. So I strongly encourage you to do that as it feels like it's time. Sosa, of course, helps us where we don't have to pass something locally and have to make this more of a target. So if we can have the state get our backs and cover our backs, that would be amazing. And if yeah, that's all I feel comfortable sharing at this point.
I would just like to do an update on Bright Start. I had finished my term as a board member at Bright Start, so I'm no longer a board member there. Four and a half years. Yeah. So I'm really happy with what we've done there. But there's some, there's a lot of new board members with some good energy and it's a really good place, which is awesome. I think one thing that we need to consider is the ARPA I think um one thing that we need to consider is um the ARPA funds that were um designated to Bright Start covered a lot of gap funding between what tuition revenue was and what operating costs were. As that money runs out, um Bright Start and the community will have to figure out other ways to do that. And I, and I know Bright Start's doing internal work to look at tuition rates and um how to um balance raising those or or sliding scale or something like that. Um but the truth is, Bright Start is also getting a lot of other grants that, some of which are now not available anymore. So I think, I think my biggest take though is that we really need to circle up as a community to look at the landscape of childcare in our community and what it needs to look like in a post-ARPA funds world. Um and so one of the, one of the action items I've um that came up at a recent board, Bright Start Board meeting, um that Commissioner Elsa Tharp was also at, was that I would like to hear a presentation from Bright Start in, hopefully in conjunction with the Early Childhood Council on the state of things and what what we're looking at, you know, how much need is there, what is the funding reality, et cetera. And and if they're doing it for for one governmental entity, it makes sense to do for both. Um doesn't have to be a work session, but if they could just present the same presentation to all of us, I think that'd be really valuable. Um and then I think, you know, we can consider acting items from there. But I think the the best start could be get that state of childcare to the community, which is important. Um cause I'm not sure what's going on with uh the center or home providers. And I think the Childcare Coalition could provide that broader um that broader look. Uh some of our new board members are are more activated around seeking private funding and private donations and more connected with the philanthropy scene in Eagle County. Um so that could bear some fruit too, but we'll just have to wait and see about that. Um I think I did share the good news that Bright Start has a secure location until the summer of twenty twenty-seven. And so that capital campaign, they're still working on, but have another year on. Um so now it's gonna be, I think the origin thing now is considering with how to resolve the operating gap. Um they are opening up a third classroom. There were two classrooms and a third will be opening soon, which will be good for both uh to address the need in our community, but also help the bottom line. So that's one step towards financial sustainability, uh but it won't, it won't solve it. Um so that is a, the childcare Bright Start updated I wanted to make. And then um I I signed on, personally endorsed um some pro-public lands efforts through the mountain, mountainpack.org. And um it's to protect federal public lands from being sold and privatized. Um it, some communities have passed resolutions in support. La Plata County, San Miguel, Pueblo, Chafee, Towns of Dolores and Lyons, for example. Um I would be interested in in um passing a resolution in support of that. And I was just curious what, if others were, would be interested in that.
I'd like to see the language that some of those other.
Yeah.
Um municipalities in particular.
Okay.
Have put together.
Okay.
See what it entails.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, with that, spread it out.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. Would you be interested in seeing?
I think it's a good idea. I'd like to understand what the real risk is or threat of federal sales of some of these lands.
Yeah.
I imagine they're looking more at land where there's a resource that could be exploited, but maybe not strictly.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I would have to see more information.
Great to think about, appreciate them. Other council reports? Well, it's now then, public meetings later. Any um speaking back that we are clicking on the wrong things. So having Memorial Day, Monday is a city holiday. And next weekend, and suddenly it's June. So our next meeting will be on the third. Um and then we have, we need to put the work sessions on the uh on the city calendar. Okay, meetings later. Okay. Additional questions? About that. Okay. Have a motion to adjourn in that case.
I'll have to adjourn.
Hey, nine oh one P M, city council.
Who gets nine oh five? You?
What's that?
I guess nine fifteen.
No, I guess nine fifteen.
I know, I guess nine fifteen.
Seven thirty in the morning?